Good morning. It is Wednesday, March 27, 2024. We are the Lakeville Board of Library Trustees and we are meeting to have our monthly meeting. And I'm going to have everybody, including the director, introduce themselves. So we'll start with you, madam.
I am Ruth Gross. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
Jennifer Jones, Library Director.
I'm going to skip myself and go to...
Patrick Marshall, trustee.
He is also a library director someplace else. And Nancy LaFave, I'm Library Trustee Chair. We're going to start the morning off with the question, is anyone taping? And Matt, a LakeCam is here. We thank them for producing this copy of our meeting. And we're going to go to the secretary's report. Having everyone who's had the minutes prior to the meeting, are there any questions or corrections or additions to the minutes from February 28? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept it as printed?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the motion to accept the minutes has prevailed. So now we're going to go to the director for the financial report and gifts, and then her regular report.
Okay, so we're still working through the budget pretty well, I think, you know, aside from what's known issues. I have tried to put in some extra orders for video and audio, and I'm working on some eBooks in Overdrive Marketplace to spend down some of the money that we need to spend. And in terms of gifts this month, I have to report that we received $325 from the Small Kindness Project in Middleborough to be used for a children's program. And Teresa already has a program in mind for that.
So will this be a separate program from like anything that you're currently doing?
It's something that they said use towards.
Towards a program?
So she already had a plan. So she's just going to use the money towards that. And then we received $25 from a Lakeville resident in honor of her friend for her birthday. So we will be picking out a children's book for that.
Great. And that's a wonderful way to give somebody something that keeps on giving.
Yes.
Who was the $325 from?
The Small Kindness Project in there in Middleborough.
Okay, director's reports. We're going to Program Services and Collections.
So yes, we'll start with that. We have Storytime, they're still going well. Music Time, the first session drew a large crowd, but I think people, you know, since decided they'll come back another time or, you know, it's been a more manageable crowd. Pace has resumed their playgroups. However, unfortunately, they had to cancel this morning. So they're somewhat up in the air now. We'll see if they can continue. I believe they were having some staffing turnover.
Okay, so they didn't have enough people to cover the program?
So we'll have to unfortunately tell people today it's not going to happen, but hopefully April they will return. And February vacation programs drew very good crowds. We had Math Science Up Up and Away, Bluey, and Velvet Mandolos for teens. And I did include Teresa's report. So if you want to read more closely on her thoughts on the programming, you can do that. For adults, we had Pop-Up Art School, Felts at Countryside. We had 21 adults attend that. They all really enjoyed it. Colleen McWilliam had a small crowd. She came to me with the idea to present to parents about Foundations for First Words. So she did get great questions from the few people who attended. It wasn't like eight or so attended, and it was some of her friends. But she did make some connections with people who were interested in speech services. And then Novelties Discuss, the Midnight Library by Matt Hay. They had, I think, their usual crowd of around 15 people. And this month, this coming month, they'll read The Particular Sadness of Lemon Cake by Amy Bender. Upcoming programs for National Library Week, I'm showing a library-related movie, Foul Play. If anybody remembers that, it's with Chevy Chase and Goldie Hawn as a librarian. So it ought to be interesting.
Oh, perfect library movie.
We have Mini Golf coming up, so that's a reminder. April 21st from 12 to 4:00. And Friends are sponsoring that this year. I noted that down in the Friends report.
So that is free?
That is free. Donations are welcome, but not required to play, is what we've been putting on the marketing. And then the local author series, Annie Prescott's rescheduled program is going to happen Saturday, April 27 at noon. And we've been marketing it heavily to see if we can get people to come. Advance Air will be out on Friday, moving into buildings and grounds to install the latest round of parts.
How wonderful.
Our next round.
So I will talk to them too about some of the hotspots and issues. But I did get my hands on the capital plan because they sent out a list of projects that could be covered with ARPA funding. And I see that we are on for FY '26 with a library roof replacement at $250,000. And then in FY '27, library heating system replacement at $100,000.
Wow, they're gonna... Well, they know. I love the capital thing because it gives you long-range planning and you're still thinking about things so they don't just come up and smack you with something that's going to fall apart, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so it's definitely, you know, I think I'll talk to Paul about... I don't know if Advance has some ideas themselves about newer systems that they're installing in terms of heating or what sort of upgrades we would need. But obviously, we're going to have to talk to somebody about what is necessary.
What year is the heating replacement?
FY '27. I don't think we're going to be able to replace this roof for $50,000.
It's $250,000.
Oh, $250,000. Okay, that's... I like it.
That was a very nice wish for a small roof.
There was even concerns.
Well, you figure out that the systems are going to be like over 20 years old. And we've had chronic issues with our HVAC system since it was installed. And finally, the computer understands what's going on. And we found out the things that were missing on certain intakes and outtakes. So I think it should be really wonderful if all happens, even though things have quieted down a little bit.
Yeah, because I know the...
And the gallery door was the one that was fogged?
Yes, that's very...
Lovely.
The lighting issues, the few that were out, and I think it was a ballast issue, they've been fixed. There is since another issue, but I think, you know, that can be addressed. They're still lit enough so that maybe we can push it off a little bit. Talk to Kevin, the electrician. Pest Control Services, the initial service happened on Friday, March 8. And we're very lucky that they came early and found the issues. There was some ants activity already, so...
Already active? Were they at the back of the building?
Towards, yeah, over, sort of between fiction and nonfiction.
Okay.
So we did get that taken care of. They put some stuff down. They said because of the activity, they put some gel down.
Which they take back.
And they'll be back. However, we do in the... Next to the staff mailboxes, there is a binder that they left with us. So in that binder, it gives a list of where they put everything.
Great.
And it also has sort of a, he drew a map, but it's really not great map of where things are. Very rudimentary map.
Not one of our maps, right? So what was the company that we had that came in?
Burgess.
I'm sorry?
Burgess Pest.
Now, is this one that the town uses?
It's the one that had been in the works before I got here. So they had already issued a quote, and I just followed up with them.
All right, produce before they get in.
So they'll be back. And we are too, and this, you know, if you happen to see anything too, there's a space where we can write down any pests that we see so that they can address it the next time they come.
Documentation, good.
Yeah, they're very, I was very impressed with the binder that they brought in.
We always get the statement of what we owe, but never anything like that.
Yeah, and it has their insurance information and the material safety sheets, so very nice.
Are they local?
Yes, I believe they are. I forget which town they're out of, but I know they're in South Yewell.
My favorite one is the last one on the list.
Yes, so you may have noticed they're working on the stage. So this required them to come out and look at the water issues and where the water lines are. And also, the little issue with our irrigation has been fixed. They came back and they fixed the wires, so those are all set. But they didn't want to hit the irrigation that's on that side with the stage. So they were talking about how they were trying to find everything. And I asked about, you know, next year or this coming year. And they said we will be hooked back up to the parks.
So we will be hooked up to Loon Pond Water.
Yes, according to the DPW.
Which means our line item is going to go right back down to what it's supposed to be in water.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. And thank the DPW. And I'm sure that Paul's been, Nia's been involved in some of these things too, right?
Yeah, Paul's been out working a lot. So you probably see him quite frequently working on the stage if you pop by. Staff evaluations are happening now, and final assessments are due Friday. So on the stages, I've written them up, and I'm just meeting with the staff now so that I can submit them. Chief O'Brien was hugely supportive of scheduling a fire drill. I reached out to him. He said it would be great. And then I realized there's no like little maps on the wall.
Where you should go.
Where we should go. So I have to work on that part and an emergency plan.
I think it would be fun if we could do it on a day where we could get lots of different age people here to see how long it takes all of us to get out of the building. And we might have something like a little treat in the gazebo. I'm not sure what it would be yet, but I was thinking fire safety, but, you know, something where the fire is, though.
October is Fire Safety Month.
I know, but I'd really like to do it earlier. We could do it maybe twice a year. Ask them if it twice a year would be a good idea, don't you?
So, yeah, we can think about that. I was thinking for maybe a fall date, but if you do want to do it sooner, we can try. It's a matter of getting all that stuff in place, though, so...
So at your work schedule convenience, maybe we can schedule something, and his also. But, I mean, it's never happened, but we should all just be able to respond and not freeze and do what the children do at Assoomso when they have, and then the other buildings, school buildings, when they have a fire drill. I am sure that all of them, other than being startled by the sound, will know just exactly how to help the adults leave here, you know, because they're just capable.
So the Friends with the Library met on March 4. They have the upcoming Mini Golf Tournament. And then their next meeting is Monday, April 1. And then the gallery...
Election Day.
Yeah, that's right, it is Election Day. We have the Guild of Natural Science Illustrators New England Chapter coming in with curiosity illustrating the wonders of nature and science. And the reception is planned for Saturday, May 4. And it will feature a talk by wildlife illustrator Matt Patterson and live artist demonstrations.
And those are during the reception?
Those are during the reception. So we're kind of filling it too as an event so that we can get more people here. So it's going, it's out in the new newsletter, and I have a flyer ready to put out on April 1.
Any questions to the director on the report? And then Teresa's report is here for February?
Yes.
The Bluey Party was a huge success in terms of attendance, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes.
There was a lot of people.
And a lot of people. Teen volunteers to help.
Yes, she had a very good amount of teen volunteers.
We thank the teen volunteers.
Yes. And her teen volunteers are wonderful.
That's great.
Are really incredible young people working with them.
So we are down to personnel update?
So Christina Reford, who is currently, she's finishing up her stint in Rainham as the library assistant there. She will be joining us as the new library assistant on April 1.
Is it R-E-D-F-O-R-D?
R-E-F-F-O-R-D, Reford.
All right, great. Now that we're up to full capacity on staff, you can all expect to be called in, but, okay. Then we're going to budget update?
So as far as I know, the budget meetings, I think the Joint Finance Select Board, I believe that's how they do it, will be held in April. I have dates, but I don't have a specific date for us yet. So they're looking at April 17 and 18 and April 25. So I know the 25th is supposed to be the same day as the next scheduled zoning meeting. So they, we won't be able to, they asked, and we won't be able to host the meetings here. We already have events going on.
That's during Vacation Week, April 17.
Yeah, too, the dates are during Vacation Week, and the 25th.
And the 26th, 25th? I have a meeting on the 25th. Do you think, is it going to be an evening?
Probably.
Evening meeting? So if we could do 17th or 18th, that would be okay for me.
That's all I know so far about the budget meeting.
Okay.
Pretty much the same has been put in.
Policy review.
So I have the collection development policy that I printed off for everybody. And I sent that out. So the green highlights are questions I still have on language. So maybe take a look and think about how we could word it a little bit differently. And the reason for saying that the overseeing the youth library and selection is because I don't really check her carts. I don't know if that's something you'd want me to do or to give her more autonomy with the children's collection.
Well, I think that's in there just technically because you do oversee, I mean, not that you have to check on, but you do technically oversee the children's collection. I mean, if there were, if she had questions or if there were a problem with ordering or something, it would be...
Basically, the box stops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gives that position a little bit of security in uncertain times.
Okay.
So what you're suggesting is that we keep that as printed?
I'm comfortable with it. Are you comfortable with it?
And just, I don't know if it implies that I'm over her shoulder looking at what she's ordering?
No, because I think, I think in your first sentence, I mean, technically, the legal, selecting materials legally rests in the hands of the governing board, which is us, but we're not checking the carts that you order, and, I mean, we're...
We are entrusting you with that responsibility. It's a delegation.
Okay.
And we feel comfortable because it's part of running the library as opposed to what we do.
Well, maybe there's another word besides oversees.
Yeah.
And...
And not supervise either.
For adult, yeah.
Okay, so look for a synonym for overseas to insert.
But keep the basic principle of it in.
Well, I think not, I think for the security of that position.
Right.
You know, and maybe it's something that wouldn't hurt to see what other libraries have put in. Because if somebody's coming from a library where they do feel as though the buck's not going to stop with them, and they come here, they might feel a little uncomfortable with it. That's all I'm saying.
The rest of the yellow is all stuff that has been added to what I found in the previous policy collection. So I added in the information about the Bill of Rights from the American Library Association, and that is now appended in the back, and that was in the blue.
Just before we go on that page, I'm wondering, just as a thought, I know we're not voting on this today, but going back to that sentence, I'm wondering if you even need that sentence in there? Because you have the board, the board in turn delegates to the professional staff, which becomes responsible for the development of the collection on a day-to-day basis. Does it matter that the director's responsible for the, in youth services? You could just say professional staff, get rid of that. And then professional staff are responsible for choosing appropriate materials, weeding, blah, blah, blah.
That works for me.
Change both to professional.
I would just get rid of, again, just as a, I mean, I think about it, but maybe that whole sentence isn't necessarily needed. Because who's to say you necessarily, I don't know, maybe at some point, somebody else may order some of the adult materials.
Yeah, I guess you're right on that because it does kind of give a more procedural rather than policy.
Yeah.
Okay, do we all understand what Patrick said?
I would like it written down. If it's, is it to go in the minutes or is it just...
We're just, we're in discussion.
This is discussion.
We're in discussion.
No, I understand the basics.
So I will change it and bring it back.
So you might say this is suggested change to language under responsibilities for selection, and that the director will formulate that material for us?
Yeah, essentially, I'm looking at just getting rid of that sentence and then just changing something like the both are responsible to professional staff or staff are responsible for choosing appropriate materials.
So Jennifer will fix that and can bring it back to us for approval. So the basic policy with the liberal, like liberal, yeah, the library bill of rights is, and it, the new insert?
Yes, it's the, it was in the blue. It came out remarkably dark, so I'll have to change that highlight next time.
People go to lights in next...
It blew a lighter blue. But that's the basic, taken right from the ALA's website with all their adopted and amended information at the bottom.
Any questions on that? No. Go to page two. We're talking about scope of the collection, adult nonfiction, adult fiction, and young adult materials, children's materials, reference materials, magazines, newspapers, all the way down to gifts self-published.
These are all new?
Those are all new, including, yeah, I see the adult fiction paragraph didn't get highlighted. That is new, too.
This is all new?
All new. So the post...
So we didn't have these broken out before?
No.
Okay. I think that's good for us to do this.
And I, I didn't want to get too wordy in terms of what we were doing. So you'll see non-book materials, which could encompass library of things, too. Just to be specific, but not too specific about what we're going to collect.
I think also the sentence in, under adult nonfiction, it says, "Nonfiction may be excluded for inaccuries, lack of integrity, sensationalism, intent to incite hatred or intolerance to a text that is too specialized in nature." Which like, you know, The Insects of Florida would not be an appropriate book for this area, probably. But it might be in a regional library, it might be a good choice, you know?
And to kind of exclude textbooks as well because, yep, too specialized.
Well, and also sometimes people self-publish and...
Yes.
There's questionable research skills and tactics used, so...
So when I was putting this together, I looked at both the Haverill library policy and Falmouth policy and kind of combined what I liked out of both in terms of their language.
What was the other one, Haverill?
Haverill and Falmouth. So we didn't have anything in before about self-published, but we already do have a gifts policy. So the gifts portion kind of just reiterates what we had already had. And my question on, so you'll see there's another green highlighted on page three. Is it worth it to have a separate policy for the selection of materials for the children's? And I would add young adults. Some libraries do have separate policies for children's collections and young adult collections. And I posed the question to Teresa, should we, do you think it's necessary to have a separate policy? Or should we maybe flesh out the children's materials and why materials a little bit more in this policy and not worry about having a separate?
I would think it would be a part of this policy. This is your collection...
Under children's material?
But under children's, yeah.
I think the big highlights we wanted to hit were that it's important for providing materials in all formats to children, but also that the adults need to be responsible for their choices. Their parents or legal guardians should be responsible for their choices.
Right, we always would want parents to make, be aware of what their children are reading and deal with their family or personal...
It's said, I don't think we need some people back there. If it's said, we don't need to refer to something that's already been said.
Yeah.
That just highlights that the reader may want to look into it more, which they certainly can at any point.
On the self-published, this would be a circulating copy?
Yes.
As opposed to a reference copy?
I can add circulating if you'd like to put that in there.
Yeah, just so that people know that if you give a gift of a book, that we would probably put it in the circulating collection so that people...
Circulating copy, is that work?
Yeah. It might be something that people, this is also the thing that if people are selling the book and we have a copy that people can borrow, that might mean that people would not buy that book from the individual. So sometimes there might be a lag, you know, when it first comes out. So something to be aware of. And the gift policy is basically meaning gifts of books, but...
Yes.
I think it's pretty much what we've always had in terms of our ability to accept. And it's also in good condition.
Yeah, so this, the only thing I added was the please view our gifts policy.
Is that necessary? I mean, we've got, it is policy.
It is policy.
So it's not saying please review our children's materials or our reference materials policy.
Well, the gifts policy is different from, books are part of the gift policy.
Yes.
But they do, people do give other things to us that are not books or tapes or videos. So there is the gift policy for non-collection items, like historical material or something like that that's going to go into reference or is too fragile to go into reference, so we copy it.
So are gifts.
That's why we have binders of copied books, pamphlets, especially historical things that are on lesser quality paper, which has a tendency to disintegrate now because it's over 100 years old or something. So, I mean, we do have those types of things that we've accepted for the reference room.
But are, is this paragraph the only gifts policy?
No.
Or, oh, okay, then never mind.
We have a general one, yeah.
So maybe it should be gifts policy in...
In addition to the gifts policy.
So I could say...
Collection developments policy is right here. So gifts policy in whatever title of the section with the gifts policy.
Well, you're, this is just for the collection development. It's just going to focus on books and library materials. Your gifts policy is in turn...
But if we are referring them to another policy, please, please view our... policy, please, please view our gifts, gifts policy. It's not clear to me where it is.
So I could put that at the end rather than at the beginning. So if we move that out
That makes more sense.
and it just started with gifts of new books are accepted.
For further information.
For further information after textbooks cannot be accepted.
I think that's.
Please.
Because you might have a great book, but it might be, have been stored in a basement and might have mildew issues and we can't introduce that to the collection.
Yeah, and I can bring the gifts policy to the next meeting too, so you can see that in the entirety.
So that would be its own title. Like collection development policy and then, ah, gotcha.
Gifts policy, yep.
All right.
Let's see how I wrote it on this.
People always get nervous when we say that we're weeding.
Gifts and donation.
The weeding, the collection. That makes people nervous.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, there was a time at the historic library where if we added a book, we needed to remove a book to storage because there wasn't enough shelf space. But usually when we weed here, it's with things that are either out of date in ter, especially science type of, where there's more current information that's been discovered. Or the material is so well-read that it needs a new copy of a book, especially some of the fiction, I think that's very popular. So I think that we just want to say that we don't weed arbitrarily.
No.
We weed for, um, condition, for condition is one of the big things. And also for having material that can, the public can take out that is actually accurate for this time period, especially in the science areas where there's maybe some new discovery or, or something that people thought was true has now been debunked or something like that. So it's not that we just go through and I say weed collectively. The staff do not weed arbitrarily. They make, have a real protocol for understanding how to weed.
Part of that protocol includes checkout numbers too.
Yes, how often a book is used and stuff like that. But also I think that replacement of a book that's very popular but is in worn condition at that type of.
Oh, yeah, classic.
Do you find that in your library too?
No.
Yeah, so that's, that's what weeding really is. It's not I don't like the cover or something like that. It's serious business. Okay, so we're going to come back and look at this next month and we're going to actually take a vote on it. So we need to have that listed as a vote on.
Okay.
Um, the collection development. Thank you for doing that. This is, it's time to review all our policies. So this is one more thing that we're getting done. And.
So the next one goes along with it.
Request for reconsideration of library resources, resources.
So resources is meaning more than just materials. It also means displays and exhibits, events, things of that nature. And what I relied on for developing this was the Northampton Forbes Library. This, um, they had great language and I pretty much just borrowed their policy. Um, so they, their reconsideration encompasses everything, which is what I want, did in Matipoisit as well, to include pro, library-initiated programs and displays. Because there have been a lot of questions lately about like drag queen story times and other programs that have been held. So this would give Lakeville residents a chance to voice opinions on materials, programs, displays, et cetera.
So our free take-home kits, um, to keep?
So that was their language and I know that there have been some times that the kits have been put together for take-home here.
But is, do they keep them?
Yes.
They don't come back?
No.
Okay, so what if, um, people, I know that some libraries have things that they loan people like vacuum cleaners and whole sets of mechanical things. Um, sometimes binoculars and things like that for, um, outdoor education. We don't at this point in time have anything like that. We do have one object.
One item, one item. And, um, I wanted to bring that up as well because we are looking to start the library of things collection. Um, we've had, you know, sort of a sit-down and talk about what are some of the things we'd like. We were mostly at the circ desk talking about it. We've made a list. And, um, we do have a set of binoculars, speaking of binoculars, that can be put into the collection. And we also have currently a DVD player that can be, you know, it's an older DVD player. It has the old connections for TV, so we could put that into the, um.
We have the sign?
We have the sign.
Beautiful Lakeville sign.
That's right, the sign. So there are things and we do have a space in mind for where we could store them, so we'd like to start that. Um, one of the things that I had a question about however, and it's not addressed in the policy necessarily because it's more procedural, is waivers. So I did see that there is a waiver to use the, to check out and use the leaf blower. So I'm not sure.
We have a leaf blower?
We have a leaf blower.
That we could, we could allow people? So anything that is, um, a piece of equipment that needs to be used only by adults as opposed to children who might be in the household. We would have to have some kind of waiver so that there would not be, there would be a responsibility for, for access or something like that. We have to waive, um, liability? Why do we have to waive liability?
Yeah.
So I think that maybe that's something we need to find out about through town council. What, if we did this, what would, where would the responsibility lie and whether or not we need to have a waiver signed by people taking it out and, and what sort of protection that actually? I mean, we're assuming that when we loan it out, it's in working condition and it's not going to have short circuits or electrical issues or stuff like that.
The leaf blower is not like the library's piece of equipment to blow leaves around our.
No.
Okay.
This was given by Middleborough Gas and Electric.
Oh, nice of them.
Um, it's in my office.
It's an electric leaf blower? Okay.
Or gas.
Well, no, it isn't. It's electric.
It's electric.
It's, yeah. So I mean, we just need to make sure that we underst, because I don't think any other town department loans or has a collection that they loan in that way, in that type of way. And so it might be a first-time thing and whether it will affect its insurance policy or anything like that. Because is that domino effect that when you start something new, there's like all things you never considered?
Check out some of those libraries too that have a large collection already and see what they're doing.
What are they doing? Yeah, what did their towns?
Yeah, I know Matipoisit had waivers.
Yeah, I would think that maybe before we bring this on, on board, we're considering it, but we need to look at whether or not there's certain things that we don't want to be loaning people.
Right.
Okay. But that was really nice of Middleborough Gas and Electric. They're a nice company to do with and give us a leaf blower.
Yep, then my own should get one too.
Okay, so, um, a little bit more work on this one, just to have the possibility of, um, complications that might come along with this, um, loaning.
Yeah, and otherwise they, it's pretty much, aside from the library of things and the take-home, it's pretty much straightforward about, you know.
And this would be the form that would go.
The form that would go along with that.
Okay. Request for reconsideration of library resources. Okay, so this is more like a, uh, it's, um, it's also feedback information on this too. Whether or not they, how was this resource brought to your attention? Okay, so that would also be up for reconsideration and then the statistics sheet here?
Yes. That was not in your packet in the email, so I included it here so you'd be able to see the stats.
Do you see anything that we should be noting?
I don't think so.
We're still having more people getting library cards, right?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of applications each month.
Thirty-four adults and twelve children for a total of forty-six.
And I'm sure that's going to keep increasing. There's been a few new residents, completely new to the town, so that's nice. And then a lot of people who were bumped out of the system and, you know, getting back.
Oh, because they didn't, the third year or something?
Yeah.
Um, also the fact that, um, children's programming attendance was eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven is very nice.
That's thanks to Bluey.
And the meeting room was used ten times and we have sixty-seven point five volunteer hours, which is a really great thing too.
Yes, the nice thing with the volunteer hours now is that the friends are now documenting all the time. They come in to do the book room.
Okay.
So that is part of the volunteer hours now.
Any questions? Not for the director? All right, then we're moving, um, any older new business? Um, Lakeville Day. Did anybody, have you heard anything about that?
Nope.
It is going to be Sunday, May fifth, from eleven to three P M. At the Ted Williams Campsite and it's run by the Park Commission. And it, this would be their second one. They had one that was very successful last year. It was a very windy day. Everything was outside. It did not rain. But they had to have rocks to hold down loose papers and things like that. Um, all town departments I think are invited to be there and, uh, the Historical Commission will be there. So the Garden Club is going to be there. There are a lot of nonprofits over there. And it's a good way to interact with people that you might not see. There were a lot of families that came, so some of the activities were geared towards children. It was also an event where strollers and family groupings were, were moving around, so it was well-attended. It was in March last year. So they've moved it to May because they felt it would be more amenable to people to come out in May. It, it's, um, the Sunday before Mother's Day. It also will be Cinco de Mayo, uh, fifth of May. So, um, I think that Paula Hul is one of the people organizing it. She's a park commissioner. And she would like to hear if, from you and Teresa, whether or not you would be doing something, or the friends, that would be the three groups.
Margarita Day booth, I think, for Cinco de Mayo.
There you go.
I think they had, I think somebody, I'm not sure if it's, um, the group that takes care of the lodge and the food, um, the one that runs that for the commissioners, whether, I think they're going to have food like burgers or something like that. I think that's what they had last year. They love it when we give away free stuff too. We, you know, more bookmarks, you know?
Cut those bookmarks. Order more.
So, uh, maybe Teresa and you and the friends, the three groups kind of get, three, get clustered together and find out if there's something you'd like to do.
Okay.
Um, she asked me, so I will tell her that you guys are all thinking about it.
Wouldn't it be lovely if the friends could have their book walk up by then? It's not possible. I don't think so.
It might be. There's lots of fencing all around there. I mean.
Well, they don't know what they're going to use for that yet. I think they're still researching.
They're still.
How they're going to attach it to the fence.
Yeah, because the park department wants it attached to the fence rather than the stands.
Like, yeah, zip ties and then you just cut them off afterwards.
Yeah, I don't know.
Laminate the pages?
Yeah.
That's, I think that's what Middleborough Public Library took.
Yeah, you have to buy two books and.
You have to cut them up?
Yep.
I know.
And laminate.
But then later they could go out as part of our resource thing. We could put them together with, um, the big, those big circle clamps and they could go out.
That's a lot though for storage.
Yeah, I know.
Matipoisit did them and they, it was buckets and buckets full of.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they did a lot of them. And I was like, where are we storing all these?
Um, so it's Lakeville Day at the T W C.
Okay.
On May fifth from eleven to three. And I will let Paula know that the Lakeville Library will probably come up with something.
Okay.
Question is, which table will Nancy be sitting at that day? Will she be bouncing around all day long to everything in town?
We'll make a different name tag for her.
If there's no other business, if anybody can think of anything? Then, um, we, I think I just want to go on the record to say thank you so much for organizing the legislative breakfast that you did with your, your coworker. Down in, um, Westport.
Yeah.
It was lovely and we got our picture taken with our reps. And, um, it was just really nice to hear Olivia speak about her, it's her vehicle that is, it's not a bookmobile, but it's, um.
Traveling library.
Traveling library and how neat that is for the city of New Bedford. And really, really good programming. So, and the food was good too, so. Well, thank you for being one of the point people on that.
Well, thank you, yeah.
So if you could just record that for the minutes.
Yes, I found it very interesting to hear that Massachusetts is what the, the third largest collection of eBooks in the world.
Wow.
eBooks?
Mm-hmm. And that includes possibly some countries who
Right.
make it one, one amount. So I was quite impressed with that.
We're just on the cutting edge.
We're just so tacky here.
Okay, so the next thing, if there's no other comments or, um, information to be dispersed, we'll be setting our next meeting date.
That would be.
So we are.
April twenty-fourth?
Two, three, four, are we doing the fourth?
That's what we're doing.
Two, three, four, the twenty-fourth?
Mm-hmm.
April twenty-fourth at nine A M?
Yep.
No conflicts that we know of?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for taping. Uh, at this point we will adjourn and the time is nine forty-nine. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? There's usually, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.